All right, I've got six o'clock. It's, oh my, small font. It's Thursday, April 18th. Welcome to the regular Select Board meeting. First thing is to, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, then set adjust agenda. Do we have anything to?
I need to add an executive session pursuant to 313 A1A contracts. Hopefully you'll include me, but if not.
Wait, 313? Did you guys say three?
A.
A.
Section 1 subsection A contracts.
Section 1. Contracts, got it. Okay, we'll do that after old business, but before adjourn.
Yep.
Anything else?
Motion to add an executive session?
Yep. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's good. Oh, I should've, did you already say that Sherri sent a text that she's away?
Yes.
So, do we work on the agenda?
We just did, but we can go again.
We gotta talk about the signer of property being somebody else.
That's in, I got it.
It's in yours, okay.
I'm gonna mention it.
In your report?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't, so it's in there? Okay. Okay.
Motion to this after, we already do that.
Already did it.
Good job.
Already done.
Catching up.
You already said aye.
Next is communication from the audience. Anybody here who wants to communicate something, please state your name and go ahead.
My name is Michael Southwood. And I'm just here because I want to make the select board and people at Harvick aware that I'm gonna be running for state representative for the Harvick Walden Standard, California 2 district. Along with that, if there's anyone here that would like to sign my petition, just so I can get my name on the ballot, I would appreciate it. Doesn't mean you support me, doesn't mean you'll vote for me, it just gives me a chance to be put on the ballot. But that is all, and I'm just looking forward to having the opportunity to serve the people of this community.
Thanks for putting yourself forward, it's great.
Thank you.
You wanna hang out for a minute, is it?
I am.
Anyone else? All right. Next up, Select Board to approve minutes from last time, which was April the 4th.
Motion to approve minutes for April 4th meeting?
Second.
All right, we have motion of second, I thought they were good. Anybody have anything? All right, all in favor of approving as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's everyone, so motion carries. I will sign. All right, next is Town Manager Report, given by Mr. Upson.
Okay, so there'll be a draft, the draft of the new bylaws from the modernization grant will be coming out.
It's on me.
On me, yep.
Thank you.
On me bylaws. Will be coming out. You guys are gonna have an opportunity to review them, you have to approve them. The D.R., the Planning Commission is gonna read them, and there'll be some public comment period, so. Those are coming down the line.
Coming, sorry, did you say when they're coming to us?
Soon, coming down the line.
Soon.
They just finished the drafts. The consultant that we hired, Heather Carrington, to do that.
Okay.
The bylaw modernization grant.
Yep.
We have, the historical society has asked for approval to do a project on our property there. They wanna rehab the railroad ties and tracks in front of the building.
Oh, yeah.
So they just need our permission, so I assume a general nod of approval from the Select Board that they can do that. They're not asking for any public funds for that.
So, so is it fair to say that the Select Board generally agrees with this program?
Yeah, so where's, I looked at that project.
Yep.
And so, yes, just they're just gonna clean it up and make it so it looks like a siding.
And they'll be looking to hire a local contractor to do that work.
They wanna raise it.
Oh, okay, make it a little more visible.
Yeah, basically, pick it up a little bit.
Maybe a little bit of weeds.
It's, uh, without more work than I want.
So looking for a different local contractor?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we got, Kristen Leahy got approached by another property owner down on Route 14 South to explore a potential buyout, so we have.
Is there still option for people?
It, the deadline is June 21st.
Anyone listening, June 21st is coming up.
Yep, so I just want to make you guys aware of it, and to see if that's, that's still something that you want the town to move forward on. One, one more property buyout.
No, this will be a FEMA or state-funded.
So, yes, it's hazard mitigation, this is a FEMA buyout. FEMA, with, the property owner explored all possible scenarios here, and elevating the structure won't work with the new flood mapping, it's not a good situation. So they're a little reluctant to do it, but they're running.
Well, I don't know how we can not support.
Right.
They're running out of options.
Right.
Well, there was a town in Southern Ramon that didn't approve that, and there's.
Exactly where we're in.
They're being told, they're being brought to court. But who knows? Who knows?
And then FEMA would reimburse that to 75%?
It's a, it's a grant, basically. No, it's a, they pay for the purchase of the property, they pay for the demolition of the structure.
Mediation of the land.
And, and then the town acquires the property with deed restrictions, it can never be developed, and it has to stay open and available to flood, so.
So, so it really doesn't cost us anything, except it takes the property off the grand list. So for, it reduces the total taxable property in town, but on the other hand, properties that are prone to flooding are, they're the liability, generally anyway. So, it's, the property owner has come to the point where.
Right, when they abandon the property, it's not gonna have any value, enough value, we're not losing that much.
Exactly.
I mean, obviously, odd cases like the motel. We are, but normal residential river dwellings.
Right, okay. So the RFP, the Request for Proposals, went out for the emergency watershed protection, that was in the paper today in the News and Citizen. I've already engaged with some engineers on some questions, so that's going well. We've had a abnormal, well, I wouldn't say abnormal amount. Several folks have come to the office recently about their water bills being high, and I just want people to be aware that a leaky toilet or a leaky faucet can create water running through the meter, and therefore you, your water, your quarterly water bill would reflect that. So it's important to make sure that you're paying attention to water running in the house. We have sent a water operator out to do meter tests, and it's very simple, you just run water through it and see if it works, shut all the water off, see if it stops. We can data log, so we can go and see when the meter's running, and a lot of times it's in, throughout the evening into the early morning hours. If the meter is faulty, it just won't read. I've yet to see a meter that will register water running through the meter, and when it's not running through the meter. So I just want that, people to be aware of that, and then.
So, folks should be aware, I mean, one of the things is that we only do quarterly billing, so sometimes, I mean, I know I've been the recipient of a bill where I thought, oh, look at that. And I don't, I didn't remember, like, it was a month and a half before, I don't remember what happened on those days, you know?
Yeah.
So there is a bit of a lag, and it can be, can be difficult, but definitely, I think you're, so, but if people are concerned and they think they might have a problem, they should definitely call the town office.
Yep, and we can do a data log, and it'll say what time, when the water ran, and you know, a $30 toilet part at Abisham's will prevent a $700 water bill. And hydrants are gonna be flushed the week of the 22nd through the 26th.
That's next week?
Yep, that's next week, when the kids are at school.
Kids are, kids are out of school, so.
Did I steal your thunder?
Nope. I don't have thunder, so.
So that's what's going on. That's it, that wraps up my report.
There you go.
Oh, yeah. Good, I'm glad you're paying attention. I need somebody else to take Danny's place at the end of, next Monday.
To be the signer of the conveyor of the land.
To convey real estate.
Convey real estate when I took the position?
Yep.
Normally it's not a, such a hot, hot deal, but this year because of all the buyouts, it's busy, and I'm about to be not around during the day.
So that's.
There's two scheduled right now, one.
Eight o'clock on the 22nd, and then one at 10 o'clock on the 17th.
Yep.
That's April 22nd?
Yep, next week, next Monday. Or, no, it's, I think it's the 29th, one of those Mondays. He knows.
I could do one of them, I don't know if I could do both. I don't know if it matters.
The Select Board just needs to.
Somebody, you do assign ones.
Send, or nominate somebody to do that.
I can, if you, I can probably do it, depending on which dates it actually is.
Can't get into my, my Harvick on my phone, my Harvick email, I'm on the phone, I know.
My kids have my phone. They're down at my office.
How about, I'll do it.
Okay.
Unless, unless I can't, and then we'll figure something out, but I probably can.
Okay.
So, but I need, I need.
I would like to nominate Eric Carmack to take over the role of.
Conveyor of real estate.
Conveyor of real estate.
I second that. Thank you, Eric.
Okay, any other nominations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I guess it's me.
Hey, it was my, it was my attempt to pick a job that had no work involved in it, and it's the one year that goddamn I have to sell 10 pieces of property. It's hard to be a slug on this board.
Jeez.
I'll do my best.
All right, next up is Road Foreman Report. Tom, it's nice to have you with us.
Hey, back again.
It was spit snow in Walden today.
Yeah, hush up. But anyways, springtime's coming along good, finally. Hopefully by the end of next week, if weather permits, we'll have all the roads all turned over. I know the guys started working up Hopkins Way today. So we'll plan on working up there probably tomorrow, and probably Monday, too, to finish up like Striking Road and all those, get those around. And then we'll start over again, so hopefully by the end of next week, weather permitting, we'll have everything rated back up. We have started our ditching for flood repair, we started up West Hill, yes. Yeah, we got 10 million roads to reshape and everything, but, so anyway, so we started up West Hill, worked our way down a little bit down Bunker, did over Marsh Road, and we're starting over on Porter Brook Road, down through there. One little hiccup, our grader was down yesterday for a while. The battery light came on on Tuesday, when they were finishing upgrading. So what ended up being, there's a fuse link in between the alternator and the batteries, well, one of the posts ended up breaking and shorting off and melting. So, but that all got up back going again today, so they, they were out this afternoon grading with that, so. I do have a spare for it now, so if anything happens, I know what to change and stuff, so we got the spare fuse and the holder for it, so that's in the grader itself. Besides that, spring cleaning's coming up, I know we're supposed to have kids tomorrow, maybe still?
Yep.
That's gonna help us do some hydrants and some lawn cleanings and stuff for Hazen Union. Aside that, I got the paint for the crosswalks, that's offset the goal just soon as we get some warm weather.
Can't wait to see them babies, man.
They're gonna look pretty.
So I'm excited.
We do got a hiccup with the bridge on Carrier Road. We went through there yesterday, and it is undermining again, so we sent the excavator there today to hopefully pack some more stuff under it to get the water back up and flowing through, 'cause you saw down on the downside part of it, there, the water's actually coming behind the bridge and buttoning again. So we were digging that up and put some stone back in it, and hopefully put some more of that shore back into it and stuff, so.
That's the one that's actually sort of a box culvert?
Yes.
Yeah.
But the water's on, you can go run it and wash under it with the blood.
Not ideal.
Right.
It's a pretty tricky deal trying to get water back on top of it.
Yeah.
Once you.
Yeah.
Next to impossible.
Yeah, so we packed that back in today, hopefully that will hold again for a while, but we'll keep our eye on it, just to make sure.
Is your truck running properly yet?
Can I burn it?
All right, is it a chur?
It certainly is not.
Okay, so it's not, it's not.
It's a sore subject, that truck is the biggest piece of, you know what. It is running, we got the chloride tank in it and stuff, so we've been doing chloride with it and stuff. We just gotta figure out what's going on with it this summer, I don't wanna deal with Clarks anymore, and I pretty much told that to the salesman himself when he stopped by yesterday, and so.
So where do you go, down to J&amp;B?
I'm gonna try J&amp;B and see if they're any better.
'Cause they're both Alliance-owned, right?
Yes, they are.
But different.
Right, they're different, right. So they're not that much different, one's in Colchester, the other one's in Onthe Hills, so they're not that far apart, so. Distance-wise, I think it's almost the same dis, dis, distance for us. We do got a problem with Todd's tandem, though, it is blowing out motor oil right now, don't know why, but she's going through like two, two gallons a day when we run it. So, the guys were supposed to take off the plow, yep, so, so the guys were taking off the plow frame today to see if we can't spray it down with some degreaser and put the pressure washer to it, see if we can't figure out where it's coming from.
Is that under warranty, or?
Oh god, no. That was a truck that we were supposed to trade this year.
Right.
But, because of everything going on.
So is that something we can have any mechanic work on?
Yeah, we're gonna see if we, we, see if we can't get Lloyd to come up. Well, he's, well, Todd's got a front, front broken spring on it right now, so I figured, well, it goes down to McLeod, so get fixed, Lloyd can skip over from there, right, right over to it, so.
Yeah, Lloyd or Evan Changro is another one down there that's.
Yep, Lloyd's still over at Bootsy's pretty good.
As long as Lloyd, you can get him in, he's.
Yeah, he's, he's real, real busy, but.
Yeah, they got, they must have 50 trucks down there.
We'll twist his arm maybe a little bit, see if we can, but, so, yeah.
Trucks.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm a little bit sorry I asked, but I did wanna know.
But we'll baby him along, so.
Thank you. All right, next up, the Police Report, Mike Henry.
So we got another person hired, so that's two people that will be sending to the Part-Time Academy in June. If things work out, probably only one of those will be going to the Full-Time Academy in August. But, we're still interviewing, trying to see if we can get some more interest for a, another full-time position, so we can get that up and running in the near future. Purchased some radars, which should be coming in, two radars, got those on a grant through the state, got $5,000 for a grant, we had to come up with $180 or something like that.
It's a pretty good deal?
Yeah, pretty good deal. We've got one that's kind of on its way out. Trying to get parts to fix it.
Like to say I'm a fan, but.
Yeah.
You're not a fan?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're gonna cough up the $180?
Yeah, I paid for a couple of those in my day.
So did I. Yeah, they're expensive. I think that's pretty much everything, it's, it's running, so.
Any updates on communications, like radio type?
Still working on that, I got a call from another guy that said he'd be willing to throw in a bid and come up, he's gonna meet with me next Wednesday from another place. So, Radio North, the guy said he's, it's gonna take a while for him to get his bid together, but still looking at doing a simulcast system with possibly three repeaters, so, just working on that, you know?
We haven't heard from Homeland Security if we didn't get the grant, so, no news is good news in that world.
I, I did talk to somebody who's in charge of that, and they couldn't believe our radio system down there, so I think we're, we're pretty good for that grant.
For funding?
For funding.
For funding for the repeater, which is over $100,000.
It is?
Yep. And it's something that has been a problem.
For a long time.
Yep.
Forever.
Yep.
Honestly.
Do other, any of the other services, like fire, rescue, or anybody also run off that same repeater system, or is it just dedicated to the PD?
It's dedicated to the PD, you've got one up in Greensboro.
Yep.
And then you have the one on West Hill, they operate on BHF, which is a lot better than UHF, which we operate on, I see.
For our terrain, it works better, yeah.
Well, what really messed up the whole state is when they went to the narrow bend.
Yeah.
That really, that really hurt everybody.
Yeah.
Not meant for hillier mountainous terrain.
Making things better for us.
Yes. Okay, all right, well, thank you. Next, we have a Harvick Electric Report, we have Miles Cashmer Cook here.
Hey, everybody. Guys, we're on duty tonight, but obviously we are in a time of transition at HED. I am thrilled to report that as of today, we are close to finalization of an interim manager, so someone to help with day-to-day operations, as the commission continues to try and figure out post and recruit, and eventually hire a new general manager, so that process is underway, but a stopgap of an interim, it's very close to having someone come in the door, so that's great. In the interim, with general transmission, transition management and lending expertise with particular projects like the rebuilding of the hydro insulation Walcott, DUCSA in general, and Ken Nolan over there in particular have just been fantastic. It's their nonviolent resource, you know, we're a member of the organization, just under normal circumstances, but they've been really coming through and just kind of being an on-call resource for us as we navigate this right now. I think those are the headlines.
So that's a good point, because I was, I was on the pitch for a short period of time, but Vescosales you looked at as non-value. You know, just, and this is a really hands-on reason for having them around, you know what I'm saying? So it's, it's good to see that they're not just a, whatever, you know, a.
Hundred percent.
Just a, just a paper pusher organization's opinion about most of the time, they have, they have real value.
Yeah.
To the, to the general lifeboat.
Very true.
I swing that, it's awesome.
No, and we're not the first town to go through this, and they, they've helped others through it, and it's really nice to have them in our board.
Right, and that's not, I just never thought of them as being that.
Yep.
That, that resource for these utilities, especially the smaller utilities.
It can be dry.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Good luck, do you want to do work?
Any other questions for Miles about Harvick Electric? Their existing transitional state?
Kudos to the staff that were prepared to hold it down, lights on, stand.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's true, too, it shows that.
Yeah. Kudos to the staff, and, and thank you to the.
We like show reports, so.
All right, thanks, Miles. Next, item one is to consider appointing Reno DeMers as Harvick Electric Commissioner to fill every, the remaining term of a three-year seat expiring June 30th, 2024. Reno is here, he has submitted a letter of interest. Reno, do you wanna just introduce yourself and say why you're interested in Harvick Electric for those who don't know?
Well, I'm Reno DeMers, I've been a resident in Harvick since 1959. I've worked in the electrical industry for in and around power lines since 1973. Trapped all over the countryside, I admire and love to see a small utility serving a community. I'd like to see it continue to do that. Harvick, it's surrounding communities and try to maintain a reasonable rate for its ratepayers and reliability of keeping its lights on, as I was a part of this for five years. And I think we made a lot of good improvements, and with guidance maybe from the Commission Board, Harvick can continue to do that.
I would like to appoint Reno DeMers to fill the remaining three-year term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Yeah, discussion.
Yeah, just, so you have full intention of continuing beyond June.
Excuse me?
You, you plan on going beyond June, this, this term ends in June, so you're gonna stick around a while, right?
Well, I, I'd like to try it out for a while.
Yeah, so the nice thing.
I'll try to get like a three-year contract.
The nice thing about this is that there, there's only, the term expires in June, gives you a chance to say, throw your hat in the ring again, or not.
That's right.
Yeah, which is not a bad way.
It's a bad way to get into it, right, that's a good way, it's a good exit strategy right there.
We've got two meetings that you can decide.
Yeah, see how it goes, well, there might.
Yeah, we'll have some extra, we'll have some extra meetings.
I was gonna say, there'll be more than two meetings in the next two weeks.
Yeah, you're coming in at a very hot time, so, yeah, let's do it.
Any, any other discussion or questions for Reno? All in favor of appointing Reno DeMers to fill the vacant seat on the Harvick Electric Board of Commissioners, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that was everyone, so motion carries. Thank you, Reno, appreciate your willingness to join that group. Definitely got some work ahead of you, the group does. Awesome, all right, next is item two, Select Board to consider approving a banner application for a ware to be hung on Walcott Street, June 21 to 29, and August 8 to 17.
It's supposed to be.
Yeah, I didn't think it was a ware, the application's from Circus.
Right. I make a motion that we approve banner application for Circus Circus for the dates June 29.
June 21st to June 29th, for a full week, and then again on August 8th to August 17th.
Are they both open?
Those times, those, somebody check that those are open for the banner?
I haven't.
Whoa, baby.
Next meeting.
Yeah, is next, yeah, that's fine.
Can we also approve it, just.
Yes.
Assuming that they're open, if they're not, we can talk about it at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that, and then we'll create, if we create a conflict, we'll undo it next time.
Okay, so moved.
All right, does anybody wanna second that?
Somebody unravel that.
All right, so, all right, yeah, it looks like those two weeks are usually the weeks that the circus is in town in Greensboro, right?
As long as they're not, as long as it's empty, I don't care.
Yeah, right.
Who did the second? Tim.
Tim, all right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next is Select Board to review and consider participating in the State Fiscal Year 25 Grant and Aid Program. This is for our highways.
I reviewed it, and I made the motion that we participate.
Second.
Any way we can get more money?
More roads.
Good, good question.
More roads.
No, we have to, well, or upgrading roads, we've done that before, but, yeah.
The Grant and Aid Program is gonna be updating their maps post-July flooding.
Oh, really?
So there's gonna be more Grant and Aid work to do.
Okay.
Potentially, but some of the Grant and Aid work that was done held up in, in this last flood, so that's a good test.
That's great, yeah.
So I don't know what the future of the program is, but I'm sure they're gonna continue to fund it.
Yep, awesome.
Yep.
All right, so all in favor of approving the letter of intent to participate in the. All right. So all in favor of, uh, approving the letter of intent to participate in the grant and aids program? Please say aye.
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 Aye. All right. So that's everyone. Motion carries. Probably have to sign that one, right? Um, and where are we? For, thank you. Select ward to adopt the twenty-twenty-four local emergency management plan. So I see that in our.
So moved.
All right. I know it wasn't online.
Oh, I didn't know.
Uh, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. And I just need, it wasn't in our, um, Google Drive folder, so I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Yeah.
Basically, we updated the daycares. We added, uh, the council on aging and changed, updated some phone numbers. And just double-checked our assets, our asset list. And Neighbor to Neighbor Group is working on more significant, uh, updated information for vulnerable populations and so forth. Um, and we can update that whenever. But this, the deadline, we have to do it by the year's May first. So we're getting that in prior to the work that they're doing.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any other discussion on the limp?
And this is the document that we used during the flood.
Right. Yeah. Tell us who does what.
Yeah.
Bed test.
All right. So all in favor of approving the local emergency management plan? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, I do have, well, one thing that I was gonna bring up later, but I'll bring it up because it's relative to this.
Yeah.
Um, I was asked if there was any way that we, that the town could have any sort of emergency alert system.
We used to have one. It was called the Fire Line.
I did think about that. There is sirens. It just tells you that something's happening. Um, I don't know. Just something, it's not.
Don't we have an email, Blas? Don't we have an email?
So we have an emergency notification listserv.
Yeah.
That people are still signing up for. We've, we have an active link on our website.
Okay.
Um, we have, and you can check a box that says water, wastewater, or all notifications. So if we have a boil water notice, we'd send that out. Um, if we have an activation of emergency shelter, we'd send that out. Um, as far as anything like day-to-day alerts, like when people hear the rescue squad, we're not sending out alerts for that. Uh, if there's sirens going through town, we're not sending out alerts for that. Um, but there are, um, software solutions and like TextMyGov is a, one of them that contacted me occasionally. Um, but it's an investment and it's, that would be like email, uh, text message or SMS notifications. Um, so there is, there is a, there are options out there. Um, it's whether or not we wanna invest in those.
But it's not just investing in a software option. It would be somebody actually pushing information.
Well, it would probably come from the town manager's office.
Right. I'm just, so that's another task.
But like, show me an example of necessity. What are we, what are you talking about?
Well, one thing you could, um.
Like if there was a road closure due to a motor vehicle.
Or flooding, road closure due to flooding or.
Vermont Alerts. You can sign up for Vermont Alerts and like if they have an incident, say on Route fifteen, where a granite truck flips over, they would send out a, a media blast from the P S app to Vermont Alerts. And if you sign up to Vermont Alerts, you're gonna get a text message saying area of Route fifteen is closed. So I think the email notification list is adequate.
Okay.
We use Neighbor to Neighbor.
Yeah.
Um, notification. With their listserv gets more people in the area. And, uh, during the flood, I use Neighbor to Neighbor Group and the Civic Standard. They, they both have email lists and as well as ours.
So state highways have that now. And they blast stuff out all the time and it's highly inaccurate, just like it was in Hardwick here, where they had Route fifteen closed, totally closed.
Right.
For several hours. And it wasn't closed at all, only when the wrecker was there for ten minutes.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying? So, and I know two or three other cases where they've closed, you know, sent out. V-Trans sends out their Facebook.
Yeah.
And they're, they're inaccurate. So I, I just don't think that's something at the, at the Hardwick, at the town level.
But it is, I, I think though, I like our, um, the list, the email list. I subscribe to the email list. And because we don't get very many alerts.
When you get them.
You, you look at it.
Yes.
Right.
And it's not inaccurate. It's.
It's accurate.
It's accurate and relevant.
Right.
Yeah. So, okay, great. Thank you.
I mean, there was an old car broke down just right, just before the cabot turn right in the middle of the hill today for two hours, three hours. A big old land yacht, Chrysler or something, right in on Travel Port. Uh?
You had a wrecker coming.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, it was not, when you're driving a seventy thousand pound dump truck, you should have backed it out of the road, but it doesn't matter. If there was some sort of alert that would have, it would have caused more havoc than I think that it would have anything.
Right.
That was in Walven, correct?
That was Walven, but it could have been Hardwick. I'm just saying.
Flitters out for him?
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is, but you know what I'm saying? If.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think our email, I think it works well.
Yeah, I do too.
So people should, if you're interested, sign up for that. There's a link on the town website, HardwickBT.gov. All right. Uh, next is item five, town manager to discuss potential paths forward for the replacement of the Hardwick Farms Road Bridge.
Okay, so we had a meeting with V-Trans, uh, last week. And initially we got, we requested, I requested a, an extra wide bridge. After the two, after the single lane bridge was put in, earlier in the, in February, I requested a extra wide bridge. Uh, they don't have any extra wide bridges, so they said the two-lane bridge would work in that location. Well, they showed up and said, wow, this, this is a really tough area for a two-lane bridge. We'd have to do a ninety-foot span and do considerable amount of site work. And instead of it being a hundred and twenty-five thousand, we, we estimate the cost to be two hundred thousand.
For a temporary.
For a temporary two-lane ninety-foot span bridge, okay? Um, I had discussed with, um, I, I reached out or while they were there and I had some other ideas thrown at me about putting two, um, eight-foot culverts side by side in the river, um, in Porter Brook and then covering it. So there's no live load. So, and we'd remove the bridge deck and kind of wedge the culverts in. Um, and I think that would be the best option. Uh, the state is not, they said that that wouldn't be the best option for them because it's in the water. But then I get a phone call a couple of days later that the best option would be for them to do a gravel crossing. And there's two locations there where they, the farmer.
Do it forward.
To drive through the river.
Yeah.
I reached out to the, one of the landowners that this is, project is affected by.
I love it.
And they're not convinced that the gravel crossing would be adequate for their equipment. Um, so we priced out two eight-foot culverts, eighty feet long, at a cost of.
Eighteen, over eighteen.
Over eighteen thousand.
For just the culverts?
For just the culverts to put in and then probably another twenty thousand to do the site work, maybe more. Um, we gotta cut some concrete and lift the, the decks off. So it's not, it's not a simple solution. Um, and none of this is covered by FEMA because we've done the category B, uh, emergency repairs.
So what do you think the, uh, what do you think that bridge up on Route fourteen in Irishburg being out costs Doug Nelson, Nelson fine?
No idea.
Hundreds of thousands had to. Just saying shit happens and.
Yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Well, I, I mean, yeah, absolutely.
What would, so the temporary bridge aside, what was our plan? Are we just waiting to hear back from the state to replace that bridge or are we?
No, we have, we have an H and H study that's back. Um, we need a engineer. We need to put out an RFP for an engineer.
Okay.
To engineer that crossing. So draft up a set of plans with the state's guidance for the hydraulic study. And, um, then once the engineering is done for that bridge, then the bridge would be put out, that project would be put out to bid. And then, um, it awarded and then the construction would begin. I'm hoping to time the construction to late in the fall, so it doesn't affect, if they're using that crossing, it doesn't affect cropping.
This year?
I'm hope, it, it was scheduled, the plans have changed because I wasn't able to pull the bridge and use that original plan because they said they would cut our federal aid, the state. Because that structure wasn't, they couldn't, they couldn't ensure that structure had the integrity to hold a vehicle. So that plan was scrapped. So we're kind of stuck with that bridge in place. And doing the late fall, early winter construction would have been less of a burden on landowners.
And so.
So I'm kind of stuck in limbo right now.
But the issue with the current temporary bridge is not that it's unsound, it's that it's not big enough for the ag.
Farm equipment.
Right.
Yeah, and tractors, the, the milk truck, which, and the milk and grain truck, which I think they've used alternative routes.
So I guess my question is if, so what's on the table is we either spend twenty to two hundred thousand dollars right now, theoretically right now, to have a temporary bridge for six months.
Well.
Fifty to two hundred.
No, we would, if we got, if we got to a place where we could use that crossing, um, I would focus on other projects. We have the bridge up in East Hardwick that we need to have engineered. Um, that's a two-point-five million dollar replacement.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, we've got, that bridge is, so I, I guess I don't, I'm not understanding what's wrong with the bridge there besides large farm equipment can't fit across it.
There's nothing wrong with it.
There's, that's the only thing wrong with it.
So we're talking something wider than ten feet?
Twelve.
Twelve, six? No, the bridge is twelve feet.
Twelve feet wide. So what's wider than that that can't fit across it?
Well, it's the combine and the manure haulers and the big house stuff.
Trucks are, are, are not twelve feet wide. They, they haul the manure with the trucks.
The plow, the plow goes through it fine.
The alignment of the bridge doesn't allow their nurse truck or, I don't believe it allows their nurse truck or any tractor trailer truck to turn off the bridge because of the alignment, because of the way the river.
But they can go around.
Yeah, you could take.
There's all kinds of access over there.
I personally think it is not, wouldn't, it doesn't make sense to spend money on a temporary fix that we are going to be putting, like putting in resources to do a permanent fix in a short period of time. It sounds like we have, you have a plan to put in a proper bridge, ideally in the fall. So.
If everything goes perfectly.
That's tight.
But it's tight. That's a tight.
Yeah, there's not gonna be a bridge in there for fall. I can't imagine.
So Reno had his hand up. Do you want to add something to this?
They're asking what, what fits across there.
Yeah.
You aren't gonna put a chopper across there. I can't put a baler across there. I can't put a mower across there.
Right, but that stuff is.
And I've got about, oh, four, five miles around. Lions are gonna make how many trips with pieces of quince?
So what about this idea of the, what, what about this idea of a gravel crossing? I know somebody thought it wasn't ideal, but.
It's tough. I don't know what, I mean, I have to get, I have to get the, the guy, the river guy out there and have him point out where. I don't know where.
I mean, Ford's been used for forever.
Yeah.
So there's nothing wrong with it. State's suggesting that the location has to be.
Has to be right.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I guess it's gonna be an.
So I don't know if there's one there. I'm not saying there is one there, but if there is a proper Ford.
Is there a possibility of?
I just hate to spend a lot more money than, I mean.
Well, even, even the culvert installments is gonna be a while. If we keep getting rain, there's no way you're putting culverts in there.
Yeah.
Because right now, as deep as it is, I mean, you, you've got twenty-foot sections of pipe that you have to put together with two bands. So you either build a copper dam, have pumps in there to pump water around.
Yeah, that's not gonna be an easy project at all because your culverts are not gonna, first of all, I've put two culverts together. It's not a problem. Culverts touching is, they're bored in the middle of the beach. So if you don't have a, a concrete headwell, then you're gonna chase, water's gonna run just like it does that boss culvert down around Cary Road. Water's gonna run right, oh, right in the middle of them, right under them. So it's much more complex than just throwing two culverts in there.
Tim, what were you?
This is for the benefit of one, two, three landowners. Or if that's like, that's what we're talking about and.
And their business.
And their business. Of course, yeah, yeah. And, and that, and going around, it's gonna cost them more money to run their traction machines.
Yeah.
You know, is there a way to negotiate with them that, you know, we cover part of the cost of a temporary fix and they cover it? So it ends up saving them money in the long run. It also saves the town some. We make a little bit of compromise, give a little bit of money. They give a little bit of money, which is less than what they'd spend driving around all season. And to kind of try to find a compromise like that.
I think that's a great idea, but I haven't quite heard the solution that we want to propose yet. Like, uh, like of all of the ones that were presented, none of them sounds really ideal. Like the, the two-lane bridge, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And it's temporary. And the culverts sound like they're gonna be difficult.
Right, we're not keeping that temporary bridge, right? That would still be, that, that, we'd still be giving back that bridge.
Yeah, we're just renting. We didn't buy them. We're just renting.
And then if we get more rains, the, the, yeah, that would, and so.
So we're not really helping you much, are we?
No.
I'm just giving you the information. Um, I am.
So what's our timeline on making decision?
I'm not asking you to make a decision. I'm just putting this out in public forum for you guys to be aware that this is something that has come from high up in state government because phone calls have been made. Um, they, V-Trans was told to help out the town as much as possible. And this is the solutions that V-Trans is coming to us with.
The V-Trans solution that came to us was a Ford.
Um, originally it was a two-lane.
Yeah.
Then now it's a Ford.
Right, right. The cost.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, no, no cost issues. A two-lane's way to do it.
Yeah.
Um, restricting the cost.
They're, they're not helping us because of cost. They're helping us find a solution.
No, I'm saying they offered, the, the best thing is the two-lane, but obviously we're saying that's too much money. So the next we come to.
Yeah.
Is the culverts, which they said that we probably could get away with.
It, it's not ideal.
The idea for them and I, it's not ideal for me because I know it ain't gonna work well.
Yeah.
Um, and so they're saying the Ford, if they, again, a, a proper Ford is, works fine, would be perfect if, if that's the solution.
I need to, I would need to talk to the people. I mean, the state really should be talking to the people that are, would be forwarding.
Forwarding, right.
Who have called the state.
Right.
For assistance.
Right. I mean, it's, it's gotta be the right place and they are out there and farmers use Fords for decades, decades.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, you know, in my head right now, I'm not thinking where there'd be a good one right there.
It's a tough, tough spot.
I don't know where.
Could we invite the landowner to share their opinion about?
I think they'll probably be in the next meeting.
If we were to spend a hundred thousand dollars, where are we gonna get it?
Where would we get the money?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
If we're gonna spend a hundred thousand, if we're gonna spend, let's just say seventy thousand dollars for the culverts and we start next week, where does that seventy thousand come from next Friday?
The only place we would have it come from is the general fund.
How much would it realistically cost the landowner to drive around?
I have no idea.
I mean, that's a question.
Well, it's, it's not about money. It's about time as well.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it does not, um, there's no argument that it's a big deal for, for the farmers.
It's a huge deal for everyone and we're all working together to try to come up with a solution.
Yeah, I guess.
And the landowner, I will tell you, uh, or the, the parties involved think it's absolutely crazy that we would spend that kind of money. So they are also, you know, looking at it as taxpayers of the town and like this, you know, they're, they're realistic, so.
Yeah.
That's a couple percent, right?
Yeah.
And I'm just thinking of if you could, you know, compensate them for their time or their gas, you know, their diesel and.
Yeah, but you do that. Yeah, but you do that, you're opening up a can of worms.
Oh, yeah, fair enough.
You know, if somebody else out there is in the same situation where they're blocked in.
Well, we've already opened up a can of worms by allowing a, allowing the landowner to deal with that bridge to start with.
We haven't, we haven't done any can, we haven't opened any can of worms. I don't, in my opinion, I don't think we've opened a can of worms. I think we've managed this.
Well, has it been said that we fixed it right once and then the town came along and made it so we can't use it now?
Well, that's inaccurate information and hearsay, and hearsay.
It's never been said then.
They can say it. A lot of people say a lot of things about what we do or don't do.
I don't argue with you.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, like, people can talk about all the things that they think the town does or doesn't do. And that is just part of life in a small town.
So I propose, and maybe this isn't the best thing, but I propose that. You try to instigate some sort of meeting between whoever's proposing the Ford crossing.
Yeah.
And anybody who might be interested in using that Ford crossing.
Yeah.
And try to facilitate that, a meeting on-site where people could actually look and see how it might work.
Yeah, that's my next step.
Okay, cause to me, of, of all the things we've heard tonight. That's the only thing that sounds practical, if it'll work.
We can also do it relatively quick.
It could be quick.
Was, yeah, yeah.
I mean, even if it involves.
I said, yeah, absolutely, if it would work, it'd be the.
Even if it involves some loads of crushed stone or gravel or whatever, it still would be quick and cheap.
Yeah.
Okay, so, carry on.
Just filling in.
Carry on, you're doing great. Hope, we'll come to something.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll find some way. All right, uh, next, select board reports.
So I get a report, new business, old business, something.
Okay.
Diane Peduzzi called me today from Woodbury.
I gave her your number.
You did?
Yeah.
You shouldn't have told me that. So the Hardwood Woodbury Rail Trail Committee, she would like to, uh, there's a couple of guys that, in Woodbury. That wanna get the committee's fire back up.
Okay.
Um, so off the top of my head, there's, I think there's four people from each town. Motorized, Snowbale ATV, and any user.
Yeah, all the user groups are represented.
If you're a user group, you need to be represented.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll dig out the, um. Lease agreement and the management plan and such and, uh.
Might also be that somebody from the select board's supposed to be on there.
Yeah, which is me now, I'm.
Okay, yeah.
And, uh, so anyway, I just wanted to let you know that I'm gonna fire that back up, not that, um, I don't know what they're gonna do, but.
Well, let me know when meetings are.
She's like, yeah, well, this is the problem with this committee is, the only meetings they ever had are ones that I've had to.
Yeah, cause I was on that for a little while. I was on it for a little while and the.
I found my committee works a lot better when I don't talk to anyone.
All right, so that's firing back up. You'll let us know if there are meetings.
I'm just letting you know that, it says in the record that Diane Peduzzi called me and I'm acting on it.
All right.
I'm thanking Opie for passing my number. Write it on the bathroom wall.
Call for it. I see. Um, oh, I'll do a yellow barn report.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so we had some state-level folks come visit us from Agency of Commerce and Community Development. At our two regular Tuesday construction meeting, uh, and the barn and Hardover featured in a newsletter they put out. Um, today and, uh, blah, 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 barn is, barn is.
She's gonna put the cooler in.
The cooler is in, a lot of stuff is in, a lot of painting's done, roof's done, exterior painting, there's gonna be a color.
There's standing seam on that?
There's standing seam on that, yeah, figured it was a good long-term solution.
Yeah, that's what I would do with a public building.
I lob, I lobbied for asphalt shingles.
Um, and originally had cedar shake shingles.
Oh, really?
Yeah, um.
What is the expected, uh? Completion date?
That's where I'm going, thank you. So, um, uh, the plan, Wright and Morrissey, the general contractor, plans to turn the barn over to Cabot. To move, start moving in for their retail store in mid-June.
Woo, that's soon.
Which is soon and they will be continuing to work on the new accelerator building. They're aiming to be all done with the site work, the shell of the accelerator building by August. Um, but there's a little bit of overlap there where Center for Agricultural Economy and Jasper Hill Farm, the two tenants. In the accelerator building are, probably will be able to come in earlier and start doing the cleanup. And what else do I wanna say? Oh, the, the dirty dirt, the pile of dirt by Wright Farm Road is being trucked out. I believe at a rate of three trucks per day, which was all Casella could take apparently. That was last week.
It's getting smaller.
Yeah, no, Jared's been hammering it.
But Casella apparently was.
You don't take so much cover, yeah.
Yeah, they get.
Well, it's because they take it all over New England.
They get crabby about how much.
Well, it's because they take it from all over New England and then high paying sludge come out of Massachusetts is.
Higher pain.
Much higher pain.
Um, so, yeah, so anyway.
So do we have an estimate of when that will be gone?
Uh, yeah, so the current rate, about six weeks.
Okay.
And that pile is gone. Um, and then we need to work on improving. There, there had been a gravel parking lot down there as a trailhead, we need to work on improving and, and expanding that a little bit if we can.
And that's on Yellow Barn property?
That is.
Yellow Barn property, except for the right of way for the road.
Right.
Well, I mean, technically it's all town-owned property, including the right of way for the road.
That's what I'm saying.
It's just that the, the town has leased the barn project to.
Right, what about the parking over at Lonsore Plant Drive?
What about it?
Is that a, is that parking, is it to be at parking lot, is that like, I know we talked about it, but is it in the? Is it in one of these projects?
So.
Or is it just to be returned to grass when walkers?
It needs to be, we need to create a gravel parking lot and.
But right now walkers using it for staging, their obligation is to clean it up and make it grass again.
But we need to.
We're not gonna make them do that, we're gonna trick them into.
You're leaving it gravel.
Leaving it gravel.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any trickery involved.
Well, we should just think about, we should think about doing, we should think about doing it as part of that cleanup project. Because they've got money in their project for seeding and topsoil and such. Uh, they have to reclaim that to grass and there's mu, mu, not more than enough money to put gravel down.
So more than enough money from what?
In their project.
That's our, that's our wastewater plant project.
Yeah, but the, the part of the project is they can't just leave the mud hole.
I agree.
They have to have grass, correct?
Right.
You need to work their bid, basically.
Their bid has got money to do that, so don't waste money buying topsoil and seeding. Take that money and do a change order and have them put gravel down.
Okay, that's not gonna be an apples-to-apples swap, there's probably.
No, it doesn't have to be apples-to-apples, but it's still gonna be cheaper than putting the apples down and squishing them and picking them up.
Yes, I don't wanna do that.
Down the turnips, okay?
So I, I wanna interject.
You're gonna have to understand that.
Hang on.
I'm not as dumb as you think I am.
I'm not as dumb.
Cause you're starting to push my buttons.
You're pushing my buttons.
Hang on, you guys, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Maggie's dumber than you think he is.
There's no doubt about that.
So there's one person who's not dumber than we think she is and that's Kristen Leahy, who told me that, uh, we're gonna need permits. For both of these things, both the yellow, both the Wright Farm Road. And she's, but she said that one, the one, that we just needed, um, we just need the permit from her.
Yes.
And she said, I don't wanna see that permit application until that pile of dirt is gone.
Correct.
And I wanna see it at least two weeks before you put any gravel down.
Correct.
So.
So it's just a timing thing?
Yeah.
It's.
I'll take care of it, you do such fun, you do such fun job.
And the yellow barn budget is good, tight, but things are.
Oh, yeah, so the budget is strange, we're strangely on budget, I don't, so something bad will happen.
So there, is there room for gravel improvements on Wright Farm Road in the budget for the yellow barn project?
On Wright Farm Road?
Yeah.
That's a great question.
Yeah. Because that is.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're, you got my wheels turning, yeah, yep, there's not excess money?
Could, could you do a change order and, and improve the surface on the property? I just got this idea.
Yeah, I like it, I like it. Yeah.
You guys are picking up.
I love it.
We're not picking.
But, but in that case, it involves a permit from somebody else.
Yes.
From Sasha, I think.
Yes, cause it's in the floodway.
Yes.
Yeah, which I don't think it would be a big deal.
No, I don't think so either, but we'd have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yes, all right, so that's a lot of updates, sorry for taking a long time.
Could we, um, I think we've asked this before, but could we get, it doesn't have to be in person, but could we get a written update from the library? Cause we're watching it.
We can just ask somebody from the library to come and give, provide an update at our next meeting.
Yeah, or they could write one, whatever, whatever's easier, but specifically budget, curious about.
The budget?
Yeah, and, and just like how it's going, of course.
Okay, just a general update.
Yeah.
On the construction.
On the construction project.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other, um, select board reports, new business, old business? Hearing none, could, uh, could we have a motion to enter executive session pursuant to, uh, VSA three thirteen A. Section one subsection A to include the town manager?
You're moved.
Executive.
Uh, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Carries, we go down to, we're going to your office.
Sure.
Okay.